I'm calling to order the sixth night of Arlington's annual town meeting. Once again, please silence your phones to minimize distractions during the meeting. Also, a reminder to address questions to me and not address others in attendance directly. Quoting from Town Meeting Time, Third Edition, Section 62, quote, "There is never any occasion for one speaker to address another in the second person, and this should not be permitted." So we're going to try to stick to that, okay? Speaking of procedures, there are articles coming up likely tonight or Monday night involving procedures we haven't seen in recent history at Arlington Town Meetings. There are currently two motions to commit, one for Article 40 and one for Article 41. A motion to commit, also known as a motion to refer, is a motion to refer a matter to a committee which can be an existing committee or a newly formed one. More often, we see articles where the article text specifies the formation of a new committee, often a study committee like the one which studied Turfields in recent years and another more recently studying the possibility of hybrid town meeting. But town meeting, excuse me, town meeting has the authority to refer a matter to a committee via a motion to commit or refer regardless of whether the article text mentions anything involving a committee. The motion to commit is mentioned explicitly in our town bylaws, Title 1, Article 1, Section 10, Part D, motions. When a question is under debate, motions shall be received to adjourn, to lay on the table the previous question, which is terminating debate, to postpone to a certain time, to commit, or to amend, which several motions, these several motions shall have precedence in the order stated. So that's pretty far in the weeds, and I'll explain what that means for these upcoming articles, so there's no surprises when they come up. So the town bylaws specify explicitly that a motion to commit is something that we recognize at Arlington Town Meeting and that it has a higher precedence than a motion to amend. That has implications for Article 40, as the motions are expected at this point, because we're expecting a motion to commit and a motion to amend under that article. If a motion to commit fails, then voting proceeds to any amendments or substitute motions and eventually onto the main motion. But if a motion to commit is successful, it immediately disposes of the article. This is pretty far in the weeds, but I just, I don't want that to like throw people when we actually do get around to those articles. And it gets even more complicated with reconsideration, which I'm not going to get into. Folks can read the instruction book if they want to figure out their optimal way of voting or strategizing about that, but I'm not offering advice on that. Okay. Now, please rise and join us for the National Anthem, performed by Rohan Pingway and Miles Rosenberg on vocals and Rieka Tanaka on piano.
(Music)
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that the business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of after this session. When the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, May 19, 2025, at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we have a motion that if we don't finish business tonight, we will continue Monday, May 19, at 8:00 p.m. and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. That brings us to our test question. And while we're bringing that up, I, someone mentioned to me just before we started that the screens seem dimmer tonight than other nights. Other folks seeing that as well? Maybe the lighting is different in here? Okay. Oh, the test question. Test question is, will this annual town meeting finish before Memorial Day of this year, Monday, May 26? This, this, this is a non-binding question. So that means that we'd have to finish all the business by the end of next Wednesday, the, which is, what, the 21st? And the motion passes. All right, great. So we'll go through the screens. And while we're going through the screens, why don't we get started on announcements and resolutions? We have announcement here? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nora Mann, Precinct 20. I'm speaking here on behalf of the Mystic Valley Action for Reproductive Justice, which is a group of local activists from the Mystic Valley area, to invite folks to an event a week from tomorrow here in Arlington, where we will be doing some work to thank providers of gender-affirming care. As we all know, access to gender-affirming care is being undermined at the federal level and in many states around the country, and this is an opportunity to come together and show as a community our support for providers and those for whom they provide care. We'll have speakers and we'll have food, which is always a good thing, and we will write thank you cards to folks who are providing gender-affirming care. In the back, there is a flyer that looks like this with a QR code. You can register, and when you register, you'll get the address, but it will be here in Arlington a week from tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other announcements or resolutions? Yes, Ms. Malofczek.
Ms. Malofczek, Precinct 9. They're back. The Ale Wife have swum up to Cook's Hollow, which we didn't expect this year because of the work on the bridge on Mystic Street. But if you're curious about this and you're excited about the increasing quality, good quality of the Mystic River and our watershed, please stop by Cook's Hollow to see the water churning. And that is the sign, or you hear the splash, that's the sign of the Ale Wife having returned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing none, are there reports to be received tonight? Yes, we have a report. But first, Ms. Deschler.
Christine, Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
Okay, we have a motion to remove Article 3 from the table so we could receive reports. We have a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 3 is before us. Mr. Bagnall.
Alex Bagnall, Precinct 9, and member of Envision Arlington Standing Committee. I move that the meeting receive the 2025 Report on the Annual Town Survey.
Okay, we have motion to receive the Envision Arlington Report with the survey and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous.
Okay, not going to summarize it here for you. I just want to highlight the tireless work really of three primary actors on this, Johanna Meyer, Lisa Hoda, and Len Diggin's. And please read the report.
Great, thank you. Are there any other reports to be received tonight? Seeing none, Ms. Deschler.
I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
Okay, we motion to lay Article 3 upon the table. We have a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. That takes us now to Article 30. And so let's, can we bring up a speaker queue for Article 30? Okay, let's clear this, and when you see the list go empty, then you can request to speak. Okay, Ms. Zembury, do you want to lead us off? Oh yeah, do we have a presentation? Yes, there we go. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening. Rachel Zembury, Chair of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through Warren Article 30, an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to screening and buffer requirements. Next slide. Article 30 proposes administrative corrections to eliminate duplications in the zoning bylaw related to screening and buffer requirements within the business and industrial districts that remained following the zoning bylaw recodification in 2019. Next slide. The amendment for this Warren article includes reorganized text and the removal of duplicative text. Next slide. Additional reorganized text. Next slide. And more reorganized text. Article 30 does not add new requirements or substantially change existing requirements. The ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 30. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And this was initially on the consent agenda, and it was held by John Gersh. So, Mr. Gersh, do you want to?
Pass.
Okay, pass. So we go to the speaker queue. Can we switch over to the speaker queue? And it will take Winell Evans and then Aram Holman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Winell Evans, Precinct 14. At one of the redevelopment board hearings regarding the Atwood House, which is the recently demolished house between the CVS and the Baptist Church, a discussion was held concerning which of the two setback, side setback requirements took precedence, because it was a, it was a residential zoning up against a commercial zoning, I believe. So, Mr. Moderator, I have a question for the redevelopment board. And if the buffer requirement in this proposed new section, 5.3.7.85, is stricter than the setbacks for parking lots or minimum yard sizes, which one will apply, please?
Let's see, Ms. Zembury, do you have an answer to that question, or Mr. Revulak?
Steve Revulak, Arlington Redevelopment Board, and I'm just flipping to the section so I can read the phrase that's applicable. So yes, the applicable phrase, the phrase that would answer the question is 5.3.7.85, which reads, "The requirements of this section, 5.3.7a, shall not supersede the minimum setbacks for parking lots per Section 6.1, nor the minimum yard requirements of the applicable I or B district." So in other words, the setbacks of the district take precedence.
Okay, so to, Mr. Moderator, if I could ask that in a slightly different way, does that mean that those setbacks are consistent with Section 1.4 applicability, which says that, quote, "Whenever the regulations made under the authority hereoff differ from those prescribed by any statute, bylaw, other section of the zoning bylaw, or other regulation, that provision which imposes the greater restriction or the higher standard shall govern." Is that the understanding of the redevelopment board in the application of this, this revision to the, to the article?
Mr. Revulak, is that the redevelopment boards or your understanding?
So our understanding is that this section, the, you know, shall not supersede, explicitly gives the buffer distances less precedence. So if the, and that it, not only does it give it less precedence, but it says which sections it's giving less precedence to. So with regard to Section 1.4, if there were no qualifications, you know, then I would, I would agree with your interpretation of 1.4, but given the qualitations, I believe that the, you know, the yard setbacks for the district would take precedence. Thank you.
In that case, to avoid any future confusion, I move to amend Section 5.3.7.85 by replacing the words "shall not supersede thee" with "shall not be superseded by thee." So that section will now read, "The requirements of this Section 5.3.7a shall not be superseded by the minimum setbacks for parking lots per Section 6.1, nor the minimum yard requirements of the applicable I or B district. That will make sure that the more restrictive requirements will be the standard to comply with Section 1.4." Thank you.
All right, so before you, you walk away, but hold on, the, hold on. Just so I understand what's, what you're requesting to amend here, this is under Section 5 dot 3 dot 7. Is it item 5?
It's A5. A5.
A5. Let's see, I don't see the A in the annotated warrant. I'm just bringing up the ARB report itself so I could see it in its initial form. I see, I see. The annotated warrant appears to be missing the reference to the A section, I think. Yeah, okay. So if you look at it in the ARB report, you can see 5.3.7. A, item 5.
Yes.
Okay. And you're seeking to amend "shall not supersede" the minimum setbacks to "shall not be superseded by?"
Correct.
And, Mr. Benson, you had, you had a point of order about scope?
We believe it's out of scope.
Can you speak to the microphone, why you believe this is out of scope?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eugene Benson, Precinct 10, and Redevelopment Board. The warrant article itself is just about removing duplicate material, deleting some sections, revising. It doesn't make any substantive change or propose to make any substantive change in the bylaw. And what the amendment would do is make a substantive change, so we believe that is out of scope.
I see, so your understanding is that the, from, to change "shall not supersede" the minimum setbacks to "shall not be superseded by," actually changes the semantics of that to change the direction of the comparison.
That's correct.
Okay, and so looking at the article text now, vote to remove duplicate material, hold on. Hold that one second. Vote to remove duplicate material by combining sections, yada, yada, yada. Okay, yeah, Mr. Newton, you had a point of order? Okay, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I agree with Mr. Benson on this, that to change the semantic meaning of what the constraints are would be out of scope. Yeah, I think as any layperson reading the article text, including myself, I'm not a subject matter expert on zoning, but my plain text understanding of this is that there would be no substantive changes to the zoning bylaw as a result of this. And so I think that would be surprising to folks if they were to learn of that. So I would, I consider the amendment out of scope. Thank you. Takes us to Aram Holman and then Andrew Fisher.
Aram Holman, Precinct 6. A comment and then a question. The comment, this is part of fixing a recodification that is supposed to make this easier to understand. And I looked at the original and I had trouble understanding it, and it seems like we're putting a Band-Aid on it, and after we put a Band-Aid on it, it's really not any easier to understand. So with that said, about changing things in a manner that should not change content, I'm wondering, with regard to this same section, could, could we get an example of the two situations here and which rule would apply when, just so that we could all understand it? Because I think town meetings should understand what it's voting on.
Which two sections are you comparing?
This is, this is that Section 5.3.7 that we were talking about, where one rule does not, one rule does not supersede the other. I'm having real trouble with that, and I would just appreciate an explanation of which rule would apply then, when, and what would happen, and then what the other situation is. I'm, I'm correct in understanding there were two situations, yes?
So if I understand your question, you want, you want an example
Yes.
of two scenarios, one which would satisfy the prohibition on superseding the minimum setbacks, and one which would satisfy, and one which would not satisfy that prohibition. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, can someone from the redevelopment board give an example in the positive and in the negative relative to that rule?
So I will, for an example, I will use the first, Steve Revulak, Arlington Redevelopment Board. I will use the first line in the table under 5.3.7a, which deals with the relationship of the I and B 5 districts that abut R 0 through R 5. And here, the table states that the minimum buffer requirement is 25 feet. So in the case of a I district parcel that was, say, 15 feet from a lot line with a, an I district parcel that was where the minimum setback, in IRB 5 use, the different, different uses in different districts have different setback requirements. So if the setback requirement was less than 25 feet, where 25 feet being the minimum buffer, then the setback would, would apply. If the setback requirement was 25 feet or more, then the minimum buffer would, would apply.
Doesn't that render some of these minimum in that table obsolete?
Well, I believe that is, the, the bylaw expressed a preference that the, that the buffer distances in this table shall not supersede yard setbacks in the appropriate district. So in the fact, in effect, that, yes, the, the buffer distance, you know, it is effectively the, you know, when the setback is smaller, the setback prevails.
If this is, if the attempt here is to try to make the zoning bylaw more clear, wouldn't it make sense, rather than having two separate provisions in two separate sections, to change the other bylaws and eliminate those?
So the goal of Article 30 was to remove a dup, was to remove duplication that was added during recodification. There is, the table, for example, that I just referenced, appears twice in the bylaw, 5.3.7a and 5.3.21. And the purpose of this, you know, article was to remove the duplication. Now, at a later point in time, there may be, you know, perhaps there may be interest in amending, in amending 5.3.7a, but that was not the intent of the article. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Fisher and then Christopher Moore. Okay, seeing no more speakers, we can proceed to a vote on the main motion, but before we take, open voting, this is a two-thirds vote, and this would amend the zoning bylaw in the following sections, amending Section 5 dot 3 dot 7, screening and buffers, amend Section 5 dot 3 dot 13, accessory buildings and other structures, and delete Section 5 dot 3 dot 21, supplemental requirements in the business and industrial districts, and finally, amend Section 5 dot 6 dot 2, dimensional and density regulations subsection D. And this is a two-thirds vote. So let's open voting now on the main motion under Article 30. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of those changes to the zoning bylaw, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to those changes, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes, 886 in the affirmative, 13 in the negative, 11 abstentions. That takes us now to Article 32. Let's see, 31 was already on the consent agenda. So before we introduce Article 32, but let's show the speaker queue, please. And once this list is cleared, then you can request to speak about Article 32. Okay, Ms. Zembury, you want to lead us off? And do we have a presentation? Just looking for the, the presentation for Article 32. Do they not have?
Just waiting for the presentation.
Okay. Apologies for the delay. That's 33. Voting for Article 32? We don't have a presentation? Sounds like they're saying they don't have.
There's a 13-page slide presentation for B1.
In the annotated warrant? Ms. Brazil is saying that there is, if you need to fall back to a PDF, there is a PDF version of this, the slides, if you scroll to, to the bottom of the list of presentations? There we go.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening again. I'm Rachel Zembury, Chair of the Redevelopment Board, and I'll be taking you through Warren Article 32, which is an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to the B1 parcels. The B1 Neighborhood Office District is our lowest-density business district in Arlington. It is scattered throughout Arlington, often sandwiched between districts which permit much larger development, such as our village and major business districts, B3 and B5, and our largest residential districts, R6 and R7. Over the past several years, the ARB has received several applications for projects within the B1 district, many of which were seeking relief to dimensional requirements or whose project would have been a prime candidate for retail or other commercial use, or who desired to produce more housing units but were challenged by existing dimensional standards. Currently, the B1 zoning allows only a limited number of uses and minimal height and FAR or floor area ratio dimensional standards in a way that is overly restrictive and no longer aligned with the needs of the community and development priorities of the town. Widening the range of commercial uses for properties currently zoned B1 would be a step towards increasing development and investment that would expand the commercial tax base, and increasing the dimensional standards would also allow us, allow us to create more housing units. Article 32 proposes to rezone parcels currently zoned as B1 as B2A or major business district. That would allow for a wider range of commercial uses, as well as taller height and increased floor area ratio. B2A zoning would provide greater flexibility for property owners seeking to redevelop their property, especially for mixed-use development. Note that all parcel owners and abutters have been notified of this proposed change. Next slide. Here you can see the increases in floor area ratio and number of allowable stories that would be increased with the approved, the approval of this article. This increase better aligns with the FAR and height dimensional standards This increase better aligns with the FAR and height dimensional standards for the districts that abut the current B1 district lots. Next slide. The B1 table of uses is extremely limited, and opportunities for redevelopment would be significantly enhanced by redesigning these parcels as B2A. As you see from this slide, the change would allow uses such as flower shops and dance schools to be constructed as of right, with additional uses as potential through the special permit process. Next slide. It would allow several consumer services uses by right, such as veterinary care, banking, copy and laundry services, and small restaurant uses. Larger restaurant and catering uses would be allowable by special permit. Next slide. Small retail uses would be allowable by right, and larger retail uses, office uses, and wholesale uses would be subject to a special permit. Next slide. Certain accessory uses and mixed-use development would be allowed by right, with additional assembly and research uses allowed by the special permit process. Next slide. Here you have an example of the context in which many of the B1 parcels are situated. As you can see, these parcels are abutted by the R6, B3, B4, and B2 properties, as well as a large church along Mass Ave, which is the 1R1 designation. Each of these districts allow a greater development use intensity than the current B1 districts, which are sandwiched in between. Next slide. The amendment for this article includes, next slide, text related to the purpose of the B2A district that would clarify the location of the proposed B2A parcels, and the addition of a single use by special permit in the B2A districts, as these uses may be advantageous to supporting the adjacent communities. Next slide. And on the next several slides, you'll see the list of parcels that would be included in the rezoning. Next slide. Next slide. The ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 32. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll first take, let's show the speaker queue, we'll take Christopher Loretty and then Kristin Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Chris Loretty, Precinct 7. I have a presentation I'm hoping could be brought up.
Can we bring up the Loretty presentation?
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I rise in opposition to this article for several reasons. The first one is that B2A is the wrong zoning district to change to. As the Chair of the Redevelopment Board explained, B1 is the neighborhood office district. It's the least intensive business district we have in town. What it is primarily are one- and single-family homes that, over the years, have been converted to office use. And it's the least intensive use spread throughout Mass Ave by design. Now, you might think switching to B2A is a minor change. It's oftentimes only one number higher, but that's not the case at all. In fact, B2A is to the next most intensive business district, next to B5. It allows the most intensive business use. The dimensional limits in B2A are virtually identical to that of B4, which is the vehicle-oriented business district. The B2A district was created later to allow, or actually to prohibit, automotive uses in a lot of parcels in town. So you find the locations where B2A is now are often former automotive dealerships or other automotive uses, the CVS site in East Arlington being a good example. It's really not appropriate to spread that district over the rest of Mass Ave and in other parts of the town. But I'd like to focus for a minute on the intensity of use, and this is the same table that was just shown. And focusing on mixed use in the B2A district on lots of less than 20,000 square feet, which most of them are, you can see that rather than limiting the height to 35 feet in three stories, it's now limited to 60 feet in five stories. Next slide, please. But during the master plan of 2015, there was a visual preferences survey done, and Arlington residents made it pretty clear that they don't want buildings that high, you know, that many stories along Mass Ave. Now, you may not, what these two photos are showing are five-story buildings, and the survey asked whether you thought, or whether the people thought that was an appropriate intensity of development. And over 50%, about 54% in both cases, said it was not, less than 40% or so said it was So on the next slide, to show you what we're looking at here. The house on the left is a typical house in a B1 district right now, and as I said, most of them are former, were constructed as single or two-family homes. The one on the right is a mixed-use development. Now, the three stories that's shown there isn't enough for the Redevelopment Board. They want to add an additional two stories, so you have five stories altogether with minimal business use, as we see in these mixed-use developments. Now, if you're happy with that three-story development, and a lot of people said that was appropriate for Mass Ave, that can already be built in the B1 zoning district. There's no need to make this bylaw change to bring that type of mixed-use building, or that scale of mixed-use building into town. Next slide, please. The other thing I would suggest is, again, is that the location where these changes are proposed is really not appropriate. And what this slide is showing is, circled in green are the existing B2A districts. There really aren't that many of them. The circled in red are the districts that are proposed to be converted to B2A, currently B1. They're the lots with the black outlines and green shading. If they, if the circle is dashed, it means they're not even on Mass Ave. And as you can see, they are really spread out around the town. So what this ends up doing is actually putting more intense development outside of the three business centers of town and spreading it all along Mass Ave. And I would say, and also, what it means is, you actually have less intensive business allowed in Arlington Heights and East Arlington in the central business district than is currently allowed because of the way this change is made. So if you want to, the next slide just shows the same thing in the western part of town. And as you can see, some of these B1 districts are right next to Lexington. What this is actually suggesting, where it seems to be this ARB suggesting they want to bring North Cambridge to West Arlington and make it look the same way. I want to assure you, I'm not the only one that thinks that the business, the more intense business development should be in the three business centers of the town. Going back to 1995, there was the Arlington Business Community Study that had the vision of Arlington as three villages on a boulevard, and those villages were separated by less intense residential development. That was largely affirmed in 2010 by the Vision and Action Plan for Commercial Revitalization, called the COFF Study. And again, in 2015, the master plan didn't change this. It said that we need to relook at the way businesses are zoned along Mass Ave, but it didn't fundamentally change this at all. So I would argue that this is absolutely the wrong time to make this change as well. We had a speaker up here last week talking about the revision of the master plan, and that it's being updated now and soliciting input for that. Why would anyone want to get involved in that update if we're going to get these one-off changes that are occurring completely outside and independent of the master plan? What this is telling me is the Redevelopment Board is really not respecting the master plan process. If we're going to do, make these kinds of changes to the commercial vision of the town, it really ought to be done through the master plan and not as a one-off exercise. So I'd say, Mr. Moderator, moving fast and breaking things is not the way to do zoning. And I ask Town Meeting to join me in voting down this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Loretty, I have a question for you. You mentioned kind of the wrong approach, and just to be clear, there's some versions of wrong that are open to debate, which I think is what you were intending. There's other versions of wrong that I may need to step in and make a decision in terms of like scope or process. And so is it the former that you're referring to, that the approach is wrong? Do you get my question?
I'm not sure I completely understand. I mean, I was just saying, as a process, I think this is the wrong approach.
Okay, but like illegitimate process?
I'm not saying there's anything illegal about it, but it's definitely not.
Nothing that I need to make a decision about, but is open to debate? Okay. Let's see, next we have Kristin Anderson and then Elaine Crowder.
Thank you, Kristin Anderson, Precinct 11. I have a question about the development of mixed-use buildings in B2A parcels.
Okay. What is your question?
Well, for the development of mixed-use buildings in B2A parcels, these are buildings that have zero setbacks, no room for trees, and are built right up to the sidewalk. So my question is, what is the commercial use requirement in the development of mixed-use buildings in B2A parcels? How much space must be used for commercial use there?
Okay. I don't have an answer. Anyone from the Redevelopment Board able to field that question? Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Eugene Benson, Arlington Redevelopment Board. The rules for mixed use is, there has to be mixed use. In other words, it has to be commercial and it has to be residential, for example, as to do different, as to do different uses. The rules don't specify the actual percentage because each building is different, and each building has different qualities and location. And because we have, we allow and require parking for a lot of the buildings, it reduces the space on the first floor that could be used for other purposes. So there's no set percentage in every one of the mixed-use buildings that has come before the Redevelopment Board. The Redevelopment Board has tried to maximize, to the extent allowable, the amount of commercial on the ground floor, but there's no percentage.
Okay. I think that there is a problem with not having any set requirement of the amount of space that is required use, commercial use in these buildings. And so I hope that in the future, that will change. Thank you.
Thank you. Take Elaine Crowder and then Carl Wagner.
Hi, Elaine Crowder, Precinct 19. I understand, I think, that this is the entirety of B1 district that is being spoken about here. Can I have someone confirm that?
They were talking about the entirety of the B1 district.
Rachel Zemberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. That is correct. These are all of the parcels currently in the B1 district.
And from looking at the photographs, it appeared as if there might be different zones adjacent to this B1 district? Is that also a correct impression?
That is correct. There are multiple different zones which abut the different parcels.
And so some of them are residential and some of them are?
There are several high use, along Mass Ave, there are several of the higher-use residential districts, as well as business uses on adjacent parcels.
Okay. And I wanted to understand whether there were any studies done before this zoning, that, traffic studies. I'm thinking in particular, Court Street is listed here. Court Street already has a very, very high volume of traffic that's trying to get through there on a regular basis. Has there been any traffic studies for these? And I also noticed another thing is that some of these were kind of around the corner, Mass Ave and around the corner. And the around the corner was a very small street, Forest Street in Mass Ave is an example of that. Again, it's an angled street, it's difficult to see. So have there been any traffic studies that would substantiate the decisions that you've made about this zoning?
Ms. Zember?
There were no specific traffic studies for this recommendation. The parcels that are behind those that are fronting Mass Ave are the contiguous B1 parcels that would allow a potential future development to combine parcels should that development be desired in the future.
Okay, well, I did have a concern about traffic in those already tight spots, especially looking at Court Street and, you know, the potential for, yes, maybe the post office being increased in size, but other buildings around it as well. I have another question. And that is, I noticed that there are several unbuildable zero lots. How does this affect those lots? It's not clear to me. If we're putting something into a B2 district that says you can build higher, how is that affecting an unbuildable lot?
Ms. Zember?
I'm not sure that I understand your question.
There are several things in your list that were zero Mass Ave or zero whatever, and it said undevelopable.
There are several that are parking, parking lots that are in the B1.
No, they were parking lots.
I just answered your question.
Kristin Anderson, can you clarify the question?
What?
Can you clarify the question?
If you look, looking at the pictures, okay, there, looking at the pictures, there were several that were clearly open space, zero lots, not, no parking is mentioned on that, and it describes them as undevelopable lots. I don't understand what would happen with these lots in a new district, a B2A district that is going to allow building at a higher, at, you know, five stories.
Got it. Mr. Revolak, do you have an answer to that question?
I believe that, like, Steve Revolak Arlington Redevelopment Board, with respect to the zero lot on Mass Ave, I believe it is a parking lot that's in common ownership with a building adjacent to it, so it's just a vacant lot.
There's more than one zero lot, it's not one, and it's not?
Yeah, so zero lot just means that it doesn't have an address. The zero lot means that the assessor has not assigned a street address, which means that there's no building there.
So it does not mean that it's unbuildable?
It does not mean that it's unbuildable, it just means nothing has been built.
I am not referring to the zero meaning unbuildable, I'm referring to the land use description saying that it's unbuildable. Under land, okay, so where is it? I just did all, I don't have my thing that I did a search on that's, of all the zero lots, but I looked at them on the pictures, and some of them are open space, nothing there. No parking lot. So I just don't understand.
I mean, if a lot is unbuildable under current B1 regulations, I presume it would likely, it is likely to be unbuildable under B2A regulations. Now, that's a general statement because different uses have different requirements, but, you know, this real, you know, if, an unbuildable lot, you know, in a sense, a zone, the district really doesn't, the district is not so important.
Okay, well, I just have a feeling that it might be good to, given some of the answers here, and also looking at the overall landscape of smaller houses, boom, boom, three things in the middle, I think it would be really good to take a look at this more with an eye to the adjacent properties, and instead of taking the entire B1 district and putting it into the B2A, that you select out and be a little more, you know, selective in the choice. Yeah.
Is there a question?
That was not a question, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take Carl Wagner and then Winell Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. Could I ask that the ARB's presentation on Article 32 be opened up again to page 3, please?
Okay. Can we bring up, is it the third slide?
This presentation is in the online annotated warrant, and you can take a look at it while the discussion is going on, but page 3 went by in about 10 seconds. And what we're proposing to do is take 22% or something like that of our building properties and change them in such a way that this chart, which you might not be able to see up there, the blue one at the bottom, is going to be in effect. And at the top, in the white, are 35-foot structures, the buildings you saw left and right of this building when you came in, that you see in East Arlington, wooden structures sometimes, often historic, 33% of them are historic, I guess. But in the blue down below, in addition to what looks like sensible sizes for what we already have, if the buildings go to mixed use... for what we already have, if the buildings go to mixed use, if the property goes to mixed use, then bang, you're allowed to go to 60 feet high and you're allowed to go to five floors. And I'm concerned that, we just celebrated 250 years of the battle road. We're celebrating our place in history and in current time. And I respect that the board, in a decision, has said, we need to do something to increase the uses of these properties. But I ask you, if you can't see those numbers, just close your eyes, actually, and think about the buildings next to Stop &amp; Shop and across from Stop &amp; Shop. Because that's the kind of new generic look that would replace the buildings that you see when you come into Arlington currently or you come to this building. Could I ask for a different presentation, please, to be brought up? The Memo of the Photos by Claire Ricker, B one.
Okay, this is.
Page three, please. It's down a couple.
Can we scroll down to page three?
There are photographs I want to show and page three begins some of the photos. It's hard to see these things. It's hard sometimes to imagine what the change could be in our buildings because we're talking about trying to make it better for business and we all want to make things better for business, right? Certainly I do. And we want to say yes. We don't want to say no. I think when we.
Mr. Wagner, is it the, just clarification? Is the Memo B one photos that you're referring to?
There's supposed to be something called Memo B one Photos, Claire Ricker.
Okay.
It's in the annotated warrant also, if we don't get it up.
Yep, I think, I think we got it.
Thank you for putting it up.
Page three?
What we're talking about is essentially a loss of our historic and cultural heritage if we go forward with this as planned. And also, it means a loss of huge amounts of existing businesses that are in those small office locations that kind of look like big houses because they were perhaps houses. And if you think about the Toraya, the old Toraya block, something like five businesses were lost when a mixed-use building across from Stop &amp; Shop went in. So mixed use, I know this body in 2005, including me, wanted it to be great for business with accessory apartments. But in actual fact, we're displacing businesses when we allow what is proposed to happen, when we incentivize going to these big buildings that are the mixed-use buildings. So it's hard to see here, but on the bottom and actually the top there, it's a regular building. It's about 30-some feet high. It kind of fits into Arlington. You can close your eyes and see walking through Arlington as soon as you leave Cambridge and walking through parts of the heights, the predominant style. Can we go forward one page, please? Same thing, you know, trees, buildings that are human scale, some setbacks. Could we go forward one, please? Oh, could we go forward again? Thanks. There we go, perfect. Again, on the bottom there, it's, it's houses or buildings that fit into the Lexington-Arlington historic 250 thing. I think we really don't want to lose this. We don't want to lose the businesses. And not to be a no person, right? What can we do? How can we ask the redevelopment board to come back? We should ask them to come back with expanded uses for the shells of these buildings, for the structures that are there, so that we keep the trees, the open space, so that we keep our historic structures and we allow, I don't know, what else we need to allow in those businesses. But if we don't, you can mark this day as the day that Arlington changed from historic structures to generic structures throughout our thoroughfares. And that's the day in 2025 if we vote yes on this. So please vote no. Ask the redevelopment board to come back with expanded uses, but not expanded sizes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take Winell Evans and then Vincent Bodwan.
Winell Evans, Precinct 14. Just basically a brief follow-up on what Mr. Wagner said. I counted and of the 111 parcels that are slated for redistricting, I believe over 40 or over one-third of them are on either the Arlington Historic Registry or a National Historic Registry. And somewhat inconceivably, those structures are protected by only a one-year demo delay. And we all saw what happened to the Atwood House, to bring that up again. So these, these buildings are really kind of on the chopping block. And I wonder if I could ask a question, if the redevelopment board did talk about this at all in their discussions and if they talked about any way beyond the demo delay by which these buildings might be protected. Thank you.
Does anyone from the redevelopment board want to address that question? Ms. Zenberry?
Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. Because a parcel is in a zone does not mean that a parcel is required to be developed to the extent allowable by that zone. We did not look at, across Arlington, as part of the scope of this article, looking at changing the requirements for demolition delays for historic structures. What we looked at was eliminating what had been spot zoning by placing B one parcels throughout town and finding a more appropriate use for those parcels if they were to be redeveloped in the future.
Thank you. I'll take Vincent Bodwan and followed by Joanne Kullenan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vincent Bodwan, Precinct 1. First, a quick question, if I may. We have B two A parcels in town. I'm curious if someone can speak to whether they have been heavily developed with kind of large buildings or if someone could characterize what type of development those current B two A parcels have.
Anyone from the redevelopment board? Mr. Revak, want to characterize buildings in the B two A district?
So the, the one that Steve Revak, Arlington Redevelopment Board, I think the one B two A parcel that's most familiar to me is a Leahy Clinic on Broadway. I believe it's two stories tall with a rather large parking lot. And I, I, Walgreens, okay. Well, Scutra, okay. Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. So Walgreens, another one-story building with a large parking lot, Scutra, another one-story building along Summer Street.
Thank you. I, I've been thinking a lot over the past few years about what makes a good town. We have great residential districts, but when I talk to people about the future of Arlington, I hear, I was going to say desire, but it's more of a desperation for more commercial vitality. And I also hear angst about the rising cost of living and rising property taxes. And I think this is a good change. This focuses development, first of all, commercial development along Mass Ave and Broadway, which is where we need it. And it might add some new growth, which would increase the tax base and lessen the pressure on the residential property tax. A previous speaker had suggested that the B one districts were the way they are by design. I think nothing could be further from the truth. The current commercial zoning is essentially a relic of the, the zoning map being essentially fixed in time. At some point, we decided to rezone every parcel to essentially reflect what was there in the 1970s. And I think we have certain areas of town, like our commercial corridors, that might want to evolve, that might want to grow. So I would urge you to support this article. I think it's a good change. I don't think we will see, unfortunately, the demand just isn't there for vast amounts of huge new commercial buildings. But I think we might get some nice commercial districts and, you know, in places that are walkable and accessible and would really improve the town. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take Joanne Kullenan, followed by Junko Nagano.
Thank you, Joanne Kullenan, Precinct 21. I urge you to vote no on Article 32 because I feel it puts the cart before the horse and because it represents a blanket approach to the main thoroughfare in town, which done haphazardly could lead to the loss of more business space as well as the loss of our town's historic identity. This comes, as we say, we want to protect businesses and that we care about the town's history. Mostly, I ask you to vote no because B one zoning serves multiple purposes in our town, ones that are not going to be replicated if these parcels are folded into B two A. For starters, we've not been provided with information in our packets on what businesses stand to be, potentially be lost if we do this. This change would affect 123 parcels, I believe, and we're told that's a full 22% of Arlington's business space. Yes, 22% of our business space. To me, this demonstrates, to me, this being that we weren't told what businesses are there at present demonstrates that we are showing very little respect for the small businesses that hum along quietly in our midst, but that are not as flashy as retail or fine dining. I haven't done an inventory, but some of the businesses I see as I pass through, by these buildings include dentists, mental health professionals, physical therapists, accountants, lawyers. There's even a funeral home in B one. We need such businesses, even if they're not as exciting as a restaurant or a café on the surface. I would argue that it's important to know what kinds of businesses would be impacted before moving forward with a plan that takes a particular type of business space away. Nor do I think they can all be squeezed in around town in hodgepodge fashion via a loosening of business uses in residential zones. So why might a good deal of business space be lost if we put this cart before the horse? Specifically, one of the goals of this change, stated goals of this is to allow for taller height and increased floor area ratio, providing greater flexibility for owners seeking to redevelop, especially for mixed use. You've heard this already, but we're losing business space in mixed-use projects that we've seen or that are in process, at progress at present. And only 3% of the town's land area is zoned for business use. I'm afraid if this shrinks, our businesses could end up an endangered species. Secondly, there's no clear justification given for rezoning these from B one to B two A. This has been touched upon, but B two A is described as for customers, for customers who generally arrive by car and where ample parking is needed to serve the retailer. I understand some types of businesses hoping to set up in Arlington seek larger spaces. However, the B one businesses targeted by this also need space and serve a function in society. Many businesses are perfectly designed for the spaces they occupy in this zone at present because they utilize multiple floors of the buildings and mixed-use developments discourage that. Also, because dentists and mental health practitioners tend not to have large, serve large numbers of clientele at the same time, so they don't need huge parking. Furthermore, these buildings sit in the spaces between the MBTA Act overlay and the town's three business districts, all slated for redevelopment soon. We passed a law allowing five-story buildings under the MBTA Act and will perhaps allow medium-sized buildings after rezoning our town's business districts, based on resident feedback. This zoning change attempts to bypass the public processes that were held and will be held for those rezoning efforts. Yet it would allow up to five-story buildings that are up to 60 feet tall. The new mixed use we've seen is not only unattractive, sorry to say it, but it often has only token business space on the ground floor. I'm worried Mass Ave will become a wall of gray boxes with no guarantee that the businesses displaced would find space in the mixed-use developments that might arise. Since mixed-use buildings can be situated on the sidewalks, I also worry about the loss of trees in open space. That's been touched upon. Smaller buildings, I will say, are needed to break up the monotony of the larger buildings along Mass Ave that are already there and that will be coming our way. The purpose of B one zoning would seem to be more relevant than ever in such a context. And I quote, "B one is intended to encourage preservation of small-scale structures to provide contrast and set off the higher-density, more active areas along the avenue." And I'm running out of time, but lastly, there are questions of our common culture. Many of the B one buildings are architecturally meaningful. A third of them are on the town's list of historic properties and some are on the National Register of Historic Places. Do we want to incentivize their redevelopment without considering the cultural impact of such a loss? Situated on the battle road, we just celebrated the 250th anniversary of our role in our nation's independence and we're about to build a Foot of the Hills Memorial. And I know these buildings aren't that old, but they speak to our cultural heritage. In sum, this zoning change, I feel, puts the cart before the horse. It's critical that a known net business loss proposal be enacted before we embark on rezoning the major business districts, let alone these in-between spaces. I feel we should wait to see what, what development in the MBTA overlay looks like and in the three business districts before we fiddle with the buildings in between. And I would add, perhaps, throw these small businesses that thrive in these spaces to the wind. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll take Junko Nagano and then Paul Schlickman.
Junko Nagano, Precinct 11. So I'm trying to learn about how Arlington works and looking into zoning bylaw. In particular, Section 5.5.2, Dimensional and Density Regulation of the zoning bylaw, the first table states the B district lot regulations. For the B one mixed-use, minimum lot area is 5,000. And it jumps to minimum requirement to 20,000 square feet in B two A. My question, Mr. Moderator, is how many of these currently B one lots will still qualify for mixed use when it goes to B two A where the minimum requirement is 20,000 square foot?
Mr. Revak, do you have an answer to that question?
Steve Revak, Arlington Redevelopment Board. That table lists, actually has two sets of requirements for mixed use. So there's one set of regulation, well, not requirements, regulations. So one set of regulations applies to lots that are under 20,000 square feet and ones that apply to larger than 20,000 square feet.
Okay. But if you look at this one, it's a mixed use under 20,000 square feet, just a bit ellipsis, two ellipsis, there's no requirement. So I don't know what that means.
So that means no minimum lot size.
Okay, so unlike B one where there was 5,000, it doesn't matter.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Schlickman and then Christopher Moore.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Now, I happen to live in an eighth-floor condo in an R seven zone. So, I mean, I'm in a dense neighborhood. And then all of a sudden, I'm minding my own business and I get this postcard in the mail from the redevelopment board because I'm in a butter and they're going to take the B one area adjacent to us over on Chestnut Street. And they want to make it an R two, a B two A. So I'm a longtime town meeting member and I didn't understand why they were doing that. So I contacted Mr. Revak, who is my friend and advisor on these things. And I said, Steve, why would we want to do that? And Steve's answer was basically, we can do more things with an B two A than we can do with a B one. Now, Mr. Revak, or through the moderator, through you, Mr. Moderator, Mr., could I ask Mr. Revak, is something like a coffee shop prohibited currently in a B one but would be permitted in a B two A?
Mr. Revak?
Do you for Olak Arlington Redevelopment Board? Yes, the coffee shop would be prohibited in B one but allowed in B two A.
Don't go away. Through you, Mr. Moderator, may I, may I ask Mr. Revak's opinion if there are other amenities that people in Arlington might like to have that would be possible in B two A that we can't have in a B one?
Did you two already have this conversation, Mr. Revak? Are there other desirable uses? I think, it's being asked if you can speculate on what Arlingtonians might want.
In other words, what can we have that we might like in a B two A that we can't have now?
Eating establishments and retail, for example.
Okay. Now, let's go back to Chestnut Street. The buildings on Chestnut Street are some of the most unremarkable buildings you'd see. see. Nobody is going to mourn their loss. And if you go take a look at most of the B1s that are proposed for B2A, one, they are adjacent to much more dense districts, for example, my R7, or they're adjacent to other businesses. And what the net effect of this is going to be is open up business zoning for more desirable uses. Now, one of the unremarkable businesses over on Chestnut Street is Keith Funeral Home. And people, well, they're doing a pretty decent business. I don't think they're in any danger of going out of business. And while a zoning change would permit someone from opening a coffee shop on Chestnut Street, nothing would force Keith Funeral Home to close in order to be replaced by a coffee shop. The essence of this article is to expand the uses, the amenities for the community. I think my neighborhood would be better off with B2A uses on Chestnut Street and most of the places where B2A is proposed. So, I urge you to vote and support the recommended motion by the Redevelopment Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take Christopher Moore. I just have a quick question. Is it the Redevelopment Board's intention to replace funeral homes in Arlington with coffee shops? Is that... Mr. Moore, he would answer too. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Moore, Precinct 14. I move to terminate debate.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate and all matters under Article 32 in a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 32 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. There'll be no yays until the Attorney General approves the bylaw amendment. And I will call for the yays. Okay, so we'll bring up a vote on the main motion of Article 32. This is a majority vote, and I'll just summarize it. Voting's not open. It's not open, right? The main motion here is to rezone certain parcels in the B1 neighborhood office business district to B2A major business district. So, let's open voting now on the main motion of Article 32. And again, this is a majority vote. And can we switch the screen over? See the lights on? We see the speaker queue. Okay, so votes are coming in. Okay. If you weren't sure, you could always hit one or two again, and your vote will be registered. It's the most recent one that's registered for voting. So, one, to approve this change to the zoning bylaw, and two, to reject the change, and It has closed voting. And the motion passes, 114 in the affirmative, 61 in negative, seven abstentions, it is a majority vote. That takes us to Article 33. So, let's switch over to the speaker queue briefly, and let's clear that. And once this list is cleared, you can request to speak under Article 33. Ms. Zenberry, do you want to lead us off? Let's see, and do we have a presentation for this? Okay, can we bring up the presentation?
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Tosti?
Alan Tosti, Precinct 17. Does this require, does Article 32 require a 2/3 vote?
It is a majority vote.
It has nothing to do with housing. It has to do with commercial, so it should be a 2/3 vote, I would think.
Mr. Cunningham, do you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. Thank you for the question. It is not the only, housing is not the only matter, the only matters that are subject to majority vote pursuant to the changes that were made by the state legislature through their action in 2000. They amended, as we talked about before, they amended Chapter 48, Section 5, to allow for a reduced quantum of vote on certain zoning matters, including, and this particular one, I looked at this issue. I think the guidance that was provided by the state, including by the Attorney General Municipal Law Unit's office, four towns considering these matters, particularly six and seven, that talk about the adoption of mixed-use development, changes to floor area ratio and residential units, for some of the reasons that's talked about in the ARB's presentation, the effect of this particular warrant article. Those particular provisions, the general guidance provided by the Attorney General's Office, made this satisfy the quantum of vote required for majority vote in this particular instance, in my opinion.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was going to say, but I like to give Mr. Cunningham some airtime sometimes. Yeah, point of order, Mr. Wagner?
I realize the attorney just spoke, Carl Wagner, Precinct 15, point of order, but the law in Massachusetts also says that if something other than a density increase is happening, then it goes back to the 2/3 rule, as I understood it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Zenberry, you have the floor.
Thank you. Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through Warren Article 33, which is an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to adopting the map for the rezoned B1 parcels. Next slide. Article 33 proposes to adopt the changes to the zoning map that are required to meet the terms of Article 32, which was just approved. Next slide. The amendment for this warrant article includes, next slide, the zoning map amendment as illustrated in this excerpt from East Arlington to Arlington Center, next slide, and this excerpt from Arlington Center to Arlington Heights. The ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 33. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And as Ms. Zenberry pointed out, that the recommended vote for Article 33 does depend on the passage of recommended vote of Article 32, which did pass, so there's no issue there. So, let's switch over to the speaker queue. Yes, it's already there. We'll take Andrew Greenspan, followed by, or not. We'll take Mark Keplin, followed by Matthew Miller.
Mark Keplin, Precinct 9. So, I lived on, at 11 Palmer Street, and in the map, they're changing one duplex house next to me into a B2A. So, that one became a B1 because it was across the street from the Dunkin' Donuts and the physical therapy business on the strip, little strip mall. So, Palmer Street is a residential street, and this B1 exception was allowed. And there's only one business in there now. It's a home business for music teaching, but otherwise, it's non-commercial. There's some illegal apartments there, but otherwise, it's non-commercial. And then, there's another Article 39. Oh, by the way, I wasn't given notice. I didn't get the memo that it was going to change zoning. And then, Article 39 puts the house on the other side of me, making it, again, upzoning that to an MBTA neighborhood district. And then, following that house towards Broadway, Number 21 Palmer is, looks to be left at residential. So, it's this creeping commercialization of a residential street I live on. It's fairly narrow, it's a one-way street, it's parking only on one side, it's already a thoroughfare for traffic, avoiding the lights on Franklin Street, and it's really not well-suited to commercial use. We already have a Dunkin' Donuts across the street, so we don't need another coffee shop. You know, I don't mind walking, crossing the street, I don't have to walk next door. But this is a large overreach, and I ask you to let some more consideration of the zoning be done and, along with a town-agreed map or plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Take Matthew Miller next, and then Andrew Greenspan. And Mr. Keplin, thanks for the tip on avoiding the lights on Franklin Street. Yeah, point of order?
I'm sorry, I'm puzzling about the dependency that was just described.
I'm sorry, just a name?
Excuse me, Lane Crowder, Precinct 19. I'm puzzling about the dependency that was just described, but is not written anywhere in the vote language for Article 33. So, there is a, you know, it's mentioned in the discussion, but there's no relationship expressed between the vote language in 33 with 32. So, I just don't understand that in particular.
So, what aspect of it are you not understanding? What the dependency is, or why is that not articulated more clearly?
No, I don't, there's no reference, there's no specific reference that it needs dependent, that it, that the vote is dependent on 32 being passed. I would think it would need to be in the vote language, otherwise, they're two independent
I guess, I'm not sure I understand what the question is, like...
Article 33 is a subset of 32. It requires 32 to be able to be voted, but it's being presented to the meeting as two separate articles with no dependency defined.
Right, so maybe, Mr. Cunningham, can you explain why there was this decision to split these into two articles rather than one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council, and I appreciate that they may not have been this body's historical practice to separate this into two separate articles. Obviously, we learned some lessons through MBTA. I spoke with the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit regarding best practice, and it's not inappropriate to do it in one article. However, they felt that it's better to do it through two articles. I agree. I think it's more transparent, I think it's more a full, complete process. So, I appreciate the comment about the vote language, but I think that they certainly are contingent, and that's the reason why it was done in two separate articles. It was done in consultation with the Attorney General's Office.
Great, thank you. And presumably, if, and I think this is coming up with another pair of articles, is that right, Mr. Cunningham, that have a similar dependency? Yeah, yeah. A point of order, Mr. Moore?
Christopher Moore, Precinct 14. Mr. Moderator, given that Article 32 has passed, what is the scope of debate for Article
It's the changing of the zoning map to match what was voted on and accepted in Article So, the scope of debate is the changes to the zoning map.
Well, we've already approved the specific properties that are changing, so wouldn't that be out of scope?
The scope is very limited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matt Miller, Precinct 11. So, along the same lines that I was just hearing, I think I'm far enough, but not too far from the mic. So, I'm really just wondering about clarification on some of the way these things are, specifically related to Article 33. So, in Article 32, we were discussing a rezoning move. We also discussed something in, I believe it was Article 25 or 27, where we were talking about the additional units added. And it's, well, this is relevant because I'm wondering what causes something to be a zoning map change versus a bylaws change? Because that's what's brought up with 32 versus 33, and that's what's being brought up on a lot of these zoning changes. Sometimes, it's a map change, and sometimes, it's not. So, can somebody clarify what requires a zoning map change versus a bylaw change? That's my question, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cunningham, do you want to take that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. Zoning map changes are required when a parcel is specifically rezoned, as was done by Article 32, not necessarily when the uses are changed, as some of the other articles you mentioned. This is, when a parcel is specifically rezoned, the map has to correspond with that.
All right, thank you. So, if we make changes in a zoning bylaw, which essentially makes a residential zone the same as another residential zone, rather than making a change which causes it to become a zoning map change, they're essentially the same thing. We have two equivalent zones, and all of a sudden, we don't have to change the map. I'm wondering what the difference is between those two situations.
But, Mr. Cunningham, I mean, there's different, based on the conversations I've had with Mr. Cunningham offline, like, there are different formulations of arriving at essentially the same result. And this was expressed, I think, by the Attorney General's Office, as I correct, as kind of common or one of the best practices for doing this going forward, which deviates from how I think this has been done in the past in Arlington. So, there's a bit of growing pains as we get used to like this different process. But there are other ways to arrive at essentially the same result, but this path was chosen.
Understood. So, then, you can reach the same result with two different paths. Yeah, that's pretty common in software and everything. So, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Next, we'll take Andrew Greenspan and then Peter Gast. Again, this is, thank you, Mr. Moore, for the reminder that the scope for debate under this article is about the zoning map change, to bring it into, to make it compatible with what was just voted on under Article 32. Mr. Greenspan?
Andrew Greenspan, Precinct 5. We already debated all the merits on the previous article. This is just being consistent. Let's support it and vote for it.
Thank you. Take Peter Gast. There is no point of clarification? Do you have a point of order?
I want a clarification.
Oh, you want a clarification?
I do. If this warrant fails, the zoning map is not on my table.
Right. It's a question, what happens in that scenario? Mr. Cunningham, can you explain what would happen if the main motion under, if the zoning map change under Article 33 fails and the zoning map is left inconsistent with the parcel list?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council, and it's a good question. I considered that and discussed that with the Attorney General's Office. I don't think they've seen that yet. However, it's a valid question, and I asked it. My understanding is that typically, that there would be likely to be a change regardless of the vote on 33. However, I would very much like to avoid that scenario.
Okay, well, now, take, we're not going to go through this again when we go through this exercise with another pair of articles. We're going to get all this out of the way now. Mr. Gast, go ahead.
Peter Gast, Precinct 2. I move to terminate debate on this article.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 33 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. Debate is terminated. It's a 2/3 vote. So, we'll now proceed to a vote on the main motion, which is to adopt the changes to the zoning map that would rezone certain parcels in the B1 neighborhood office business district to B2A major business district, so that the zoning map matches the change in parcels that was made under Article 32 before this. So, let's bring up a vote on the main motion under Article 33, and this is a majority vote. So, if you wish to make that zoning map change, press 1. If you wish to see how the Attorney General's Office responds to a novel situation, press 2, to reject the zoning map. Okay, okay. Okay, it's closed voting. And the motion passes, 164 in the affirmative, 47 in negative, four abstentions. It is a majority vote. Okay, so we're about to take a quick break, but I do want to let folks know that there is a... is a motion, and this is not in the annotated warrant. Is that correct, Ms. Brazil?
No, it's not.
There's a motion to, because if we have motions to commit, of course, we need amendments to motions to commit. So this is on the back table. So if you skipped over the table with, with these motions, thinking that you had all the electronic copies through the annotated warrant, this is not in the annotated warrant. So if during the break, you can grab one of these if you don't have it already. And so we'll come back in 10 minutes. Okay. Okay, we're getting started. We now have Article 34 before us. Let's end our conversations and put our attention up here. Can we open the speaker, can we show the speaker queue for Article 34? Okay, so this is the old speaker queue. Let's clear, when this list gets cleared, you can then request to speak on Article 34. And let's see, Ms. Zenberry, do you want to introduce Article 34?
Good evening again. Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board, and I'll be taking you through Warren Article 34, an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to changing a date reference in the bylaws related to the zoning map previously approved by town meeting. Next slide. The reference to the zoning map in the zoning bylaw currently includes a reference to the date of the most recent zoning map. Because town meeting often votes to adopt zoning map changes, the map is updated on a regular basis following approval by the Attorney General's Office. Referring to the map's date in the text of the zoning bylaw means that the bylaw frequently lags a year behind the reality of changes approved by town meeting. This change proposes to remove the date from the zoning bylaw so that we no longer need to include this procedural step. Next slide. The amendment for this Warren article includes, next slide, zoning text illustrating the removal of the date from Section 4.2. The ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 34. Thank you.
Thank you. And this article was initially on the consent agenda. It was held by Mr. Loretta, so I'll invite him up, and then we'll take the rest of the speaker queue. Mr. Loretta?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretta, Precinct 7. My rise to oppose this article, and I'd like to explain why. This article is described as an administrative correction, and indeed, it initially was. When it was first presented to the Redevelopment Board by planning staff, the change was to correct an incorrect date on the, on the zoning map, and that was fine. Somehow, between the time of the zoning hearing and the report to town meeting, the change was made to eliminate the date completely, and that's a big problem. Mr. Moderator, through you and speaking strictly rhetorically, I'd like to ask town meeting members if they've ever worked on a group project on a document that has multiple versions and only define that one of the people in the group working on it has been using the wrong version, and even worse, that that person is you. Now, if that's ever happened to anyone, or anyone's ever heard of that, you don't have to admit it, but I think you'll understand what the problem is when you remove a date from a map, from a critical document that you need to use. This is not the way to do version control. And I think people need to understand what the relationship of the zoning map is to the zoning bylaw. State law requires all communities to have a zoning map, and that map has to be part of the bylaw. But it's not physically part of the bylaw. In the old days, when everything was on paper, you had a big stack of paper eight and a half by 11 inches that was a zoning bylaw, and then you had a zoning map that was yay big, that was a zoning map. They were two separate documents. Now, the zoning bylaw itself is changed, you know, almost every year. The map is changed periodically, but not that frequently. There needs to be a correspondence between the two of them, and when you're using the text of the zoning bylaw, you have to know which map to use. Now, this dual or split documentation has continued even at the electronic age. When you look at the PDF of the zoning bylaw, it does not include the map. The map is a separate electronic document. And again, there needs to be a linkage between the two. Furthermore, these map, the maps and the zoning bylaw are kept by various parties in different places. The planning department has copies, the building inspector has copies, the town clerk has copies. What this article is expecting them to do, everyone to do, is to be sure they're keeping track of both the map and the corresponding zoning bylaw without having any way to identify different versions of the map. Now, you might say, well, why don't they just keep the most recent version? Well, sometimes you don't want the most recent version. When the zoning board of appeals or the building inspector is considering a property that has a pre-existing non-conforming use, or any non-conforming use, and the proponent is claiming that it's been there for years, it's always been that way, it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, the inspector or whoever's acting on that application has to know both what the conditions of the zoning bylaw were at the time and also what zoning district that parcel was in. If you have a zoning bylaw that just refers to the map without having any date on the map, how do you know which is the correct map for that date of the bylaw? So that's another reason why you shouldn't, this date should not be removed. It should simply be corrected as the ARB was initially proposed to do by the planning department. Finally, I'd like to address some of the comments in the ARB's report to town meeting, because this really isn't nearly as hard as they're making it out to be. First, they do mention that there may not be any legal requirement to have the date on the map, and I don't know about that. I don't think it matters. All I can say is taking the date off is a bad idea. And the way to get around the issue that the board has raised of having to come back later and change the date on the map really doesn't exist. All they need to do is when they're changing the zoning map, in the warrant article that changes the map, they change the date in the reference in the zoning bylaw to that map. So what the, what the warrant article says is that we amend the zoning map, and here's the new map with this date. If the article passes, the date's changed. If the article doesn't pass, the date hasn't changed. But there's always a date on the map so that people using the bylaw and using the maps in the bylaw know that they're using the right map when they're using the zoning bylaw. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll take Greg Dennis and then Gordon Jamison.
Greg Dennis, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion to take Article 41 out of order. Specifically, I'm motioning to lay all the undisposed articles, 34 through 36, and 38 through 40, lay them on the table with the intention of removing them from the table once Article 41 is disposed of. The reason for the motion is that I will unfortunately be absent on Monday night due to a longstanding obligation. As I have the only positive motion under Article 41, and it looks like it might otherwise come up on Monday, I feel obliged to present it tonight. Being absent is pretty rare for me. Last time I was absent was, I think, seven years ago. So I apologize to town meeting, but I am asking, we do Article 41 now and then return to Article 34. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to lay Articles 34 through 40, minus 37, which was on the consent agenda, on the table so that we could proceed with Article 41. And we have a second, so all those, and this is a two-thirds vote to lay these articles on the table. So all those in favor of laying those articles on the table to bring us to Article 41, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
The motion fails. Okay, we have more than five standing, so let's take an electronic vote to lay articles on the table. It's a two-thirds vote, yeah. Okay, voting is open. However you voted, voted by voice, now just press the corresponding button, one or two. And this is a two-thirds vote. And the motion passes 153 in the affirmative, 52 in the negative, and six abstentions. So Articles 34, let me just update this quickly. So that takes us now to, so Article 30, and can we save the speaker queue from Article Okay, looks good. So that takes us to Article 41. Okay, so can we get a new speaker queue for 41? Okay, and so the queue is now open for requesting to speak on Article 41. Ms. Zenberry, you want to introduce Article 41 for us, please?
Rachel Zenberry, Arlington Redevelopment Board. Article 41 was an article related to proposed Affordable Housing Overlay District inserted at the request of Sanjay Newton, which was requested to be withdrawn or that the Redevelopment Board vote no action. The ARB voted 4 to 0 with one abstention at our April 7 meeting to recommend no action on Warren Article 41. During our May 5 Redevelopment Board meeting, the board held an informal discussion about the proposed motion to commit but did not take a formal vote. The board discussion included discussion around the motion to commit as overly prescriptive in recommending an affordable housing overlay district rather than taking a holistic view of the topic of housing production, overburdening volunteers and the DPCD staff who are already committed to significant 2025-2026 long-range and tactical priority projects by requiring action for 2026 town meeting and duplicates and muddies existing housing production efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, and we have, invite up Greg Dennis, who has a motion to commit.
Thank you. Greg Dennis, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, I move my revised motion to commit.
Okay, it is now, the motion to commit has been made and seconded and is now before us. Go ahead.
Thank you. My motion under Article 41 is a motion to commit. It refers the question of designing an affordable housing overlay district to a special committee appointed by key town departments, officials, and stakeholders. For several years now, town meeting and town residents have continued to express the need for more affordable housing in town. In 2020, town meeting voted 94% to create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In 2021, we passed a home rule petition for a real estate transfer tax, which we just renewed again a few nights ago. In 2022, the Housing Production Plan adopted by the ARB and the Select Board noted that an Affordable Housing Overlay District could be, quote, "a useful strategy to encourage nonprofit housing developers in the region to build what many Arlington residents say they want to see, housing that is actually affordable." And in 2023, 74% of town meeting voted in favor of a resolution to establish an Affordable Housing Overlay District. As the resolution stated, quote, "Arlington affirms the Affordable Housing Overlay District as a means to mitigate the worst of Arlington's housing crisis." To respond to that demonstrated interest, a small group of residents and stakeholders designed an Affordable Housing Overlay District and added articles to our warrant to bring their proposal to town meeting. Given the longstanding interest in providing more opportunities for affordable housing in town, I was disappointed that we did not have the opportunity to study and vote on their proposal at this town meeting. That said, I understand the reasons why. First, the citizen petitioners did not satisfy the notice requirement to owners and abutters. Citizen petition articles require notice be sent via certified mail, which would have cost the petitioners several tens of thousands of dollars. For town-sponsored articles to change the zoning map, it is customary for the Department of Planning and Community Development to send notice of the warrant article hearing to owners and abutters via first-class mail, which is much cheaper. Second, the town and the proponents felt a town-led community engagement process could inform the final design of the district, that would inform the final design of the district would be appropriate here. So my motion is intended to overcome those justifiable objections. It creates a committee who is charged with soliciting community feedback and then analyzing that feedback to inform their recommended design of the overlay district. Further, as an entity of the town, the committee is not subject to the expensive certified mail notice and can rely on the customary first-class mail notice of the warrant article hearing. A few concerns were raised about my first draft, some of which we've heard, and I sought to clarify those in the revision that's before us. First, there was some concern that the first draft gave the committee the authority to issue the recommended vote on the warrant articles that they propose. No, that would violate state law, not what I intended. My revision clarifies that it's the Redevelopment Board, as state law requires, that holds the warrant article hearing for the proposed articles and issues their own recommended vote. I also note that under this motion, the ARB appoints a member of the committee, as does the Department of Planning and Community Development, and the presence of those members can ensure that the input of those boards is incorporated throughout the process. Second, there was a concern about the timeline, namely that the Department of Planning and Community Development has a number of other priorities for the year, and as such, the committee may not be able to complete its work in time for the 2026 annual town meeting. I didn't think that was a serious concern, as committees can and do ask town meeting to extend their timeline and charge when necessary. Nevertheless, for clarity, the revision specifically requires the committee to request an extension of its charge should it be unable to complete the work in time for next year. So that's it. An Affordable Housing Overlay District is something that we've said on many occasions that we want, so let's get it done. Vote yes on this motion to commit to solve the notice problem, solve the community engagement problem, and set us on a path to creating more opportunities for affordable housing construction in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Point of order, Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. Point of order. I'm not saying this just selfishly, but Mr. Benson was ahead of me and was inserted probably a minute or three minutes earlier.
In the speaker queue?
And he disappeared, and I and many other people disappeared from the queue. We, I saw him adding himself back, so I added myself back, but a lot of people were lost. Thank you.
Oh, this is still the old queue?
The old queue.
I see, we have the Article 34 queue saved from before. Can we just go ahead and clear the, I didn't, did this, okay. Now, request, you can request to speak now. Apologies for that. Okay. And so while those requests are coming in, the, I just want to clarify that, that the recommended vote by the Redevelopment Board under Article 41 is no action, and the only scope for debate at that point is to make, normally, what I would say in the past, what my predecessors would say in the past, is that the only scope for debate is to introduce a substitute motion. There are other motions in the book that do apply, but, and the motion to commit is one of them. Usually, we don't mention it because no one ever makes this motion until now. And now it's all, it's, it's, it's all the rage now. So, and so the, the ability to refer to a committee is just an inherent power that town meeting has, even if it's not explicitly called out in the article text, as I mentioned in my opening remarks. Now that we have a motion that's been seconded in front of us to commit or to refer this matter to a committee, like, that is now the scope for debate going forward unless someone makes other motions that I haven't seen yet. So with that, we'll take Mr. James Fleming, followed by David Pretzer. And apologies again for the hiccup with the speaker queue. Go ahead.
James Fleming, Precinct 4. Point of clarification, in the text of the motion to commit, there was a language that said that the committee shall insert into the 2026 town meeting warrant an article, one or more articles. Mr. Moderator, is it fair to say that that means that the, unless the committee extends its charge next year at town meeting, we are definitely voting on something related to this next year?
That is my reading of it. Actually, I had a question about that myself for Mr. Cunningham. Does, if this committee is voted into existence by town meeting tonight, does, does that committee actually have the authority, does a town committee have the authority to insert an article into the warrant, or can it only recommend that, for instance, the Select Board or Redevelopment Board insert the article into the warrant? Because it's not through a citizen's petition, so can a town committee do this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. Pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 5, there are restrictions about how zoning articles can appear in the warrant. can appear in the warrant, specifically. Adoption or change of zoning ordinances or bylaws may be initiated by submission to the City Council Board of Selectmen of a proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw by City Council, by the Board of Selectmen, Select Board. A Board of Appeals by an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption by request of registered voters of a town pursuant to Section 10, by 10 registered voters in a city or town, by a planning board or by a regional planning agency or by other methods provided by municipal charter. So this committee's work would have to satisfy one of those requirements set forth in 48, Section 5.
Okay. So it sounds like, then, what the committee will end up doing is if they end up submitting a warrant article, which it sounds like they will, because the committee shall submit at least one article, then it will go to the ARB for review sometime next year, or they will submit a motion for, to extend their charge beyond one year if they are unable to come up with another article. I think that's fine. I think we should vote this in favor because all we're voting for is that they get to take a year to think about this and come back to the ARB with something else. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so yeah, the only article that the committee would be authorized according to the, would be charged with this vote language would be to extend their, extend the committee's charge, not to insert a zoning article. Correct? Yeah. Okay, so we'll take David Pretzer, followed by Paul Schlickman.
David Pretzer, Precinct 17. I'll keep this brief, but I think we've seen through town surveys, we've seen through past discussions at Town Meeting, that affordable housing and the need for affordable housing is very keenly felt in Arlington. There's the shortage, we cannot meet the demand, and Arlington is becoming a very expensive place to live. It's important for our schools, for our neighborhoods, to enable people to not get priced out of Arlington, to be able to have diverse housing for different price points and to accommodate people that may not be as well-off as other people in Arlington. I think an affordable housing overlay is very valuable. I think, like, the Housing Corporation of Arlington and other affordable housing builders would benefit greatly from this, and so I think forming a committee to figure out the best way to approach this and take more public input to make sure that we're doing this in the right way, but also that it happens and doesn't keep getting put off indefinitely is the right path for it, and so I encourage you to vote for this motion to commit. Thank you.
Thank you. Very close to calling scope until you said the word committee. Mr. Schlickman, and then Carl Wagner.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Motion to terminate debate under this article.
Okay, we have motion to terminate debate under Article 41, on all matters under Article 41. And a second, all those in favor of terminating debate, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. Okay, so that brings us to a vote on the motion to commit, and this is a little bit different than other motions because if it fails, then we have to proceed to the, a vote on the main motion of no action, which is a very uninteresting vote that we have to take anyway, which we can do by voice vote. But if the motion to commit succeeds, then that disposes of the article, and there's no further vote on the article unless it, there's notice of reconsideration, and we get into reconsideration, which is a whole other mess. Okay. Yeah, point of order, Mr. James? The motion to commit is majority. Yep. Let me just double-check that. Yes, it is majority vote. Okay, so let's open voting on the motion to commit, which is the Dennis commit motion. If you're in favor of referring this matter to a committee as specified in the Dennis commit motion, press 1 for yes. If you wish to not refer to a committee, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. This is a majority vote. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes 156 in the affirmative, 46 in negative 3 abstentions. Article 41 is disposed of, which now technically brings us to Article 43, unless someone wishes to make a motion, which I don't want to have to ask for, but if someone wished to make a.
I'm sorry, I'm just making sure I'm being fair.
So Article 43 is before us. Mr. Newton?
Sunday Newton, Precinct 10. I move that we remove the articles, can you give me the numbers? 34 and above.
All the articles on the table except 3. How about that?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to remove all the articles on the table except for Article 3, unless someone has a report. And we have a second, so all those in favor of effectively bringing us back to Article 34, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no. And it is unanimous. We are back at Article 34, which has now been put back before us. Yeah, I should have taken a picture. Okay, so, let's see, Mr. Loretta spoke, Dr. Dennis spoke. That brings us to Gordon Jamison, followed by Sam Polk.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. Ooh, moves. If I understand this one correctly, we're doing, this is the, okay, got my feet. So in the past, as we discussed ad nauseam a few minutes ago, we would pass a zoning bylaw change, and then we would either with that change or subsequently pass another article that updated the zoning map. You'll see that we're still doing that this year, but the good news is that this article makes the map the map. When we make the change and it's approved by the Attorney General, then it becomes the map. Is that correct, Mr. Moderator? Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, Mr. Cunningham, do you want to answer that question? I guess I'm confused by the question because Article 35 is the one that changes the zoning map. Mr. Cunningham? Perhaps you understood the question better than I did.
Mr. Moderator, thank you, Michael Cunningham, Town Council. I think we're on 34?
That's right.
Which is the one that changes the map? I think the answer probably is maybe. The thing that can, I think that was concerning to the Redevelopment Board and the Planning Director and myself, even in this, the map referred to, the official map, referred to in our bylaw, then refers you to the Clerk's website, was 2021, which demonstrates a problem for me of lack of, you know, up-to-date, I really just, it's disconcerting to have something like that that exists on our website. Having a lack of a date makes it certain that we're always going to be, hopefully, accurate, but it does not necessarily absolve us in the future of having zoning bylaw map amendments that require map change by separate bylaw. I would hope that further discussions with the Attorney General's Office and, you know, as this issue plays out, that perhaps we can, in the future, consolidate those to become more efficient. I will seek to do that, but I always want to make sure we're doing things properly procedurally, as well as making sure that the people of the Town, well, Town Meeting members have sufficient notice of all potential changes.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So, well, still, my interpretation of this article is that, once we get through this year, where we do have to make votes on the different map changes that we do or corrections there, too, then next year, there is the possibility that the map is the map, once we pass the change and the AG approves it. I have a question, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Am I correct that each by, each article passed is, has a date and of record that the Clerk keeps?
Ms. Brazil, is that, is there, just the date of a vote of Town Meeting?
When we pass a zoning bylaw article, you keep the record of the date that that passed, correct?
Yes.
And the AG?
The Clerk's office does track that.
And the, and you also track the positive feedback, positive affirmative action by the AG of that passage, yes?
Yes, Ms. Brazil says yes.
Okay, so we have a record that when all these things passed. I have another question, Mr. Moderator, it might go over in this direction, and that is, when these changes are made by Town Meeting, approved by the AG, will the Department of Planning keep a record of the date when the last change has been made so that that map is, quote-unquote, the map?
Director Ricker?
I'm Claire Ricker, I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. Yes, we will keep track of the latest state of the map.
So I think we got everything covered here, folks. Please vote yes.
Okay, so next we have Sam Polk, followed by Beth Ann Friedman.
Sam Polk, Precinct 12. I move to terminate debate.
Okay, we have motion to terminate debate under Article 34, and we have a second. So all those in favor of terminating debate on Article 34, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. So, let's see, so this is a majority vote, and this would strike the words, quote, "and dated May 14, 2021," from the Section 4.2 of the zoning bylaw titled "The Zoning Map." Just removing the reference to the date. So let's open voting now on the main motion under Article 34. Okay, voting is now open. If you're in favor of this change to strike the date from the reference of the zoning map, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes 155 in the affirmative, 41 in negative, 4 abstentions, and that is a majority vote. Takes us now to Article 35. So let's show the speaker queue. And let's clear that, and when the list goes empty, then you can request to speak on Article 35.
Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through warrant Article 35, an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to adopting the zoning map previously approved by Town Meeting. Next slide. The official zoning map in our bylaws typically lags behind by one year. This is due to the fact that we have often one or more articles that need to be collated together on the zoning map, once they have been approved by the Attorney General's Office following annual Town Meeting. This zoning map includes the most recent changes approved by both Town Meeting in May 2024 and the Attorney General in December 2024. The amendment text for this warrant article includes, next slide, excerpts from the, excuse me, the zoning map, which we have here for reference. The ARB voted five to zero at our April 7th meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 35. Thank you.
Thank you. So this article was held from the consent agenda by Chris Loretta, so Mr. Loretta, do you want to lead us off? And following Mr. Loretta, we'll take Arthur Prokosh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretta, Precinct 7. I'm still confused about why this article is even needed. Did we or did we not amend the zoning map previously?
Let's see. Director Ricker?
Hi, Claire Ricker, Director of Planning and Community Development. We have voted to amend the map several times, most recently last spring, to encompass the changes that we made for the MBTA Communities Project and Zoning. This adoption for the administrative correction will add 5 to 7 Winter Street to the multifamily overlay, which was passed by Town Meeting last spring.
So you're saying that was not changed, the map was not changed to add that?
Director, yeah, can you clarify the distinction between the adding of that parcel and the approval of the zoning map?
Sure. This was, last year, what we voted was to add the parcel. What we're doing now is we are, once the Attorney General approved that article, it is time now to amend our map to include 5 to 7 Winter Street.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I really think the Town needs to go back to the old way of doing things. The current Redevelopment Board is making this way too difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Schlickman, followed by, okay, Andrew Greenspan? Sam Polk? Al Tosti?
Cash.
Okay, seeing no more speakers in the queue, we'll proceed to a vote on the main motion. This is a majority vote to adopt changes to the zoning map as amended previously by Town Meeting. So let's open voting on the main motion under Article 35. Okay, voting is now open. Make sure to check your handset, there's a digital display on there that tells you whether you're vote-registered. So if you're in favor of adopting the changes to the zoning map as amended previously by Town Meeting, press 1 for yes, or 2 to not adopt those changes, or 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes 200 in the affirmative, 7 in negative, 2 abstentions. That takes us to Article 36. Let's show the speaker queue. And this is recommended voted no action. Ms. Zenberry, did we clear the speaker queue on this yet? No? Okay. Speaker queue is now open for Article 36. Point of order?
James Etulio, Precinct 12. Mr. Moderator, why do we even need a presentation on this if there's not a substitute motion and this is a no action? Isn't there only one way to proceed at this point?
I believe Ms. Zenberry is probably going to tell us that the Redevelopment Board recommended a vote of no action. Hopefully, there's not a whole lot of detail to that, because there's not many letters and no space action, so, thank you. Ms. Zenberry?
Good evening, Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. Article 36 is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment related to the zoning bylaw in Section 5.5.2B, which said it required minimum floor area percentage for permitted non-residential principal uses in mixed-use developments, inserted at the request of Kristin Anderson. The ARB voted five to zero at our April 7th meeting that no action be taken on warrant Article 36.
Thank you. And this was on the consent agenda. It was pulled off by Kristin Anderson. Ms. Anderson, did you want to address this? You contacted me earlier that, you passed. Okay, because no substitute motion was put forward. So the scope of debate is no action, seeing no speakers, seeing no substitute motions or motions to commit. There, let's, we can just take a voice vote. It is listed in my Town Meeting tracker as a two-thirds vote that was anticipating that if there was, technically, like, it doesn't really matter what the quantum of vote is when we're voting on no action, but I listed it as two-thirds because it was anticipated that any likely substitute motions would likely be two-thirds, and that would be less confusing to just say that it's two-thirds. So anyway, I'll just take a voice vote on this to take no action. If you're in favor of taking no action under Article 36, as recommended by the Redevelopment Board, say yes.
Yes!
If you're opposed to no action, which means we'll still take no action, say no.
No!
Okay, it's a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Okay, so that disposes of Article 36, and that takes us to Article 38. So speaker queue is now open for Article 38. You can request to speak under Article 38. Ms. Zenberry, do you want to introduce this article for us? Ms. Zenberry, do you want to introduce this article for us?
Good evening, Rachel Zenberry, Redevelopment Board Chair. Article 38 is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment related to amending the zoning bylaw, Section 2 definitions and Section 5 district regulations to allow several new additional business uses in the residential districts, inserted at the request of Alan Greenspan. The board was split four to one in recommending no action on this article. The article concentrated on residential parcels already abutting or located near the business district and other commercial uses. Overall, the board felt that the article would not address some of the most significant issues preventing the expansion of commercial opportunities in Arlington and was overly broad. The board voted four to one at our April 7th meeting that no action be taken on Warren Article 37. In our May 5th redevelopment board meeting, we discussed the substitute motion submitted by Alan Greenspan, while no official vote was taken to determine a recommendation of action or no action. I'm sorry, I apologize, thank you so much. Given that the motion was submitted shortly before the meeting, the board identified the following concerns, but took no official vote. These modifications have the potential to displace naturally affordable housing units. There are use separation requirements in the building code which will need to be addressed in these residential conversions. The number of employees, up to five, proposed for uses such as large gyms and retailers, and the new artistic and creative production use is significantly higher use intensity than would be desirable in these districts. The substitute motion proposed by James Fleming was not submitted at the time of the most recent ARB meeting, and therefore, the board takes no position on this motion.
Thank you. So we have a, a main motion of no action before us, we have, the, the substitute motions have not been moved yet. However, I think the, the context provided by Ms. Zenberry served the interest of the meeting, so I allowed that. So now I'll invite Andrew Greenspan up, who has a substitute motion, followed by James Fleming, who also has a competing substitute motion.
Point of order, do I move the motion at the beginning or end of my time?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Do I move the, my substitute at the beginning or end of my time?
Probably best to move it in the beginning, in case you run out of time, and then you don't get your motion in.
Andrew Greenspan, Precinct 5, I move my substitute motion in place of the current vote of no action.
Okay.
Thanks, my name is Andy Greenspan.
I just, the substitute motion is now, the Greenspan substitute is now pending before us.
Okay, um, next slide? That's just the warrant language, I put, next slide? So I want to say this was iterated over multiple versions with the ARB, so I took their advice repeatedly through various iterations, and took their advice from their vote four one and changed it further, so keeping that in mind. Next slide? Oh, sorry, a previous slide. Thank you. I had one use here, neighborhood artistic creative production. The short of this is, it allows for sort of digital types of businesses, marketing, applied arts such as that. This has to exist because it is separate from a different definition in the bylaw that exists already, that included light manufacturing, and I wanted a less intense use, so I take that out and put this as a definition to be in the use table. Next slide. The other main change I had to do besides use tables was allowing multiple principal uses in R3, R4, R5, since that is some of the locations I would like these uses, so it would simply mean on the first floor, you could have like retail, or an office in the upper floors could be residential still. Next slide. So these are the use table changes I'm going to do, and blue and underlined are new. Barber shop, hair salon, tailor, shoe repair with five or fewer employees onsite. Yes, allowed R3 through R7. Health club with five or fewer employees onsite. That could include dance studios, nutrition, fitness studios, et cetera. Yes, in R3 through R7. Next slide. We currently allow retail by special permit in R7. I would allow retail smaller with less than 1,500 square feet, think a corner store, a boutique shop, a craft shop, gross floor area, five or fewer employees onsite at the same time, R3 through R7, yes. Next slide. We currently actually already do allow some business uses in residential, it's not a new thing in our zoning code. We currently allow them by right in R6 and R7, and by special permit in R4 and R5. I would make this for less than 3,000 square feet, yes, by right, R3, R4, and R5. There is a sort of complication detail thing here where there was a separation of allowed uses depending on the width of the street, which I thought was overly complex, so I removed that distinction, and there's a subsection that still exists where if the office has, is an existing building originally designed for single or two-family residents, it retains, and it retains its residential appearance, that stays except for the right-of-way as special permit, R4, R5, and by right, R6, R7, which was the status quo. Physician or clergy office with a residence up to one non-resident employee was already allowed by special permit in R0, R1, R3, and R4. I found no reason it shouldn't be allowed in R2, there was no historical reason, so I allow it by special permit in R2 to be consistent. And then, yes, in R3, R4, R5, R6, R7, that is somewhat duplicative with business professional medical office already, but our zoning code is messy, and that was the simplest way I could find to do that. Next. And then that neighborhood artistic use, marketing, arts, digital, media, R3 through R7, yes. Next slide. So a few big things that I was asked at precinct meetings. The goal of this is to allow a few more business uses than the current rules allow in our districts already. Dimensional rules, height limits, and setbacks would not be changed at all for any of these, so that stays the same. And another thing to consider is master deeds for multifamily housing control in addition to zoning, so if there's already a three-family building and they have condo or master deed, they may already ban commercial uses, which they're legally allowed to do, so even if the zoning allowed it, the private owners could decide they don't want that. So private owners of multi-unit buildings also can, can say what they want in their buildings. Next slide. We already have existing parking requirements that apply here because they are based on the business use, they don't depend on whether it's R or B, so there are onsite parking requirements for all of these, I won't go into detail, but it was in my presentation on the annotated warrant. Next slide. Also, somebody asked me about signs. Signs are dictated by the type of parcel, so those are unchanged, so you could put the same sign, type of sign you wanted before this proposal would be added as, if it were added, so that is unchanged. Next slide. So the main reasons here are lack of business space. I've heard time and again, we need more business spaces. The town keeps a registry, and there are only eight commercial spaces listed on that registry. There are some who maybe don't follow the bylaw, but we sort of have a bias where we walk down the street, if you walk down Arlington Center, time and again, you'll be like, there's tons of vacant spaces, but it's like the one space that is always the eyesore. There really aren't that many vacant spaces, and I've heard the need for more flexible in addition to additional business spaces. Next slide. I did a parcel analysis of the town, this is all the B parcels, or they were before that amendment, that we previously passed, but same total number of B and I parcels, they're only 4.6% of our entire parcels. Kristin Anderson actually did some good research on this before and showed that like, of these, a bunch of them aren't even used for businesses right now, so it's less that is currently used for business, and of the existing business and industrial parcels, only 1% are vacant, so there is a lack of space. Next slide. This allows fairness and uniformity, these are low-impact businesses, all the R3 through R7 parcels, I looked, I won't be able to go through in detail, but it is in the annotated warrant, you can look at, I mapped out the parcels. They are abutting businesses on main arterials or within a few homes, so it's sort of keeping in, keeping in having businesses on our main arterials where people frequent them and want them. Next slide. Just to say, and again, where our, where our parcels exist now and how their zone was based historically on what was there, not necessarily whether it was good or bad to be. Next slide. I found this via the help of Kristin Anderson, this is our zoning map from 1924. Much more of the parcels that I am proposing here had business uses then along the main arterials. Next slide. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but you can look through it and ask me questions afterward. I mapped out all the parcels. So just next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Yeah, I can't go through them all, but they are all in areas that are near existing places, people frequent businesses, any other parcel not shown on the map, so way away from those arterials is not affected. Next slide.
We're, we're at time, so.
Okay, then just go to the summary, please, and I will end, if possible. Or not, okay, that's fine. Thanks, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. So we'll take James Fleming next, to offer his alternative substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, James Fleming, Precinct 4. What's the magic words to move the motion? I move that my substitute motion be before the table as a replacement for the Greenspan motion?
There's no table in it, but I just moved my substitute motion.
I moved my substitute motion.
And we have a second, it is now pending before us as well.
Thank you. So, actually, sorry, hang on, I had notes. Can we pull, we have the slides, great.
Yep, slides.
So one thing you might be confused about is, how does this relate to the Greenspan amendment? And it's kind of just independent, it's another way you can look at getting more business in town. Andy's motion allows a, sort of a greater intensity of business in a smaller number of locations, you can think about like Main Avenue, but the whole building can be business, as an example.
Microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
More intense businesses in a smaller number of locations. This article would be basically more small businesses, and they'll be based out of people's homes as, as the means for how we get them. Next slide, please. They're not without precedent, I mean, some of you in here may have your own businesses, but these are some example entries from the Arlington Directory that I'm sure you cannot read because they're so small on the slides. Dressmakers in residential neighborhoods, and at least one snake oil salesperson. Next. I thought about this as the mechanism because if you're a prospective entrepreneur, you have a problem, and that is that your business may or may not even work, and you'd rather not take the risk of a commercial lease to find that out. Starting at home is really low risk because you control the environment, you can take it at your own pace, and what this article would do is give you a slightly greater ability to run your business from home, so you can have slightly more than zero employees, you can have slightly more than the current limits on free space. Just enough to get you further along before you decide whether a main street space is right for you. Next, please. This is a table that sort of shows the overall change. One thing I want to call out is that not a single one of these changes is new in any respect. Every single town in our region has some degree of these changes, and I have basically just copy-pasted the ones I thought were the most relevant into this motion. So for example, right now Arlington doesn't allow you to have any employees as a home-based business, aside from yourself. Other towns have more than zero, and so I picked the number two because two is nice. It's, it's less, it's less than five, which is in the Greenspan motion, and was one of the criticisms the ARB had, so this is, you can sort of think of this as a middle ground, but towns like Newton and Waltham have had this and have had it for years. We allow up to a quarter of your, of your building to be, or of your home to be the business. Belmont and Newton allow more than that, and so I said, okay, well, we do slightly more than that. Arlington doesn't allow you to have a sign. Almost every town in the region allows you to have like a sign that's basically the size of a street, like the street name sign, which is, you know, pretty small, seems not really like an issue. And then a lot of the rest of this stuff is sort of, our, our current bylaw has vagaries around like, it shall not infringe on the neighbors in terms of like noise and odor, and it doesn't give really any specifics. And so some of this language is just putting like concrete things in there, like referencing the noise bylaw. And then the last one is, if you're running a business at home, you sometimes would like to be able to sell the things you're making, and right now we don't allow that. But there are other towns that do allow that, and this would allow you to, in a limited way, sell things out of your business. Next, please. I'll just go through a few of these in detail, and I will warn you now, there are some duplicates that I didn't realize at the time. So we already talked about the sign, you currently can't have a sign, now it can be two square feet about a street name. An additional provision that would be added is, right now we have no limits on things like number of trips per day or traffic. Lexington had the bright idea that said, hey, we should regulate that, and so they have a provision that says, if you have deliveries, they have to look like an Amazon van or a FedEx van, something out like a mail truck. And they have a limit on the number of trips per day for 10, so like, that seemed fine. Like, it's, it's a starting point, I don't know if it's the right number, but it's probably better than having nothing there. And then towns like Brooklyn, you can sell things that you make and things that are like related to them, so like if you make, I don't know, like, if you sell sweaters or something, like you might sell like a deep-hilling device or something like that. The other thing this allows is like, I was inspired by a trip to Provincetown a couple years ago. A lot of homes in that area have been converted into art galleries in some extent, and that is definitely not selling something you made, but they seem nice, so maybe we should allow art galleries. And no sale is currently allowed. Next, please. Here is the warning about the duplicate, signs allowed at the bottom, please pay no attention to that. Right now, no, you can't have employees. This would allow up to two non-residents to be employed at your business. Right now, we allow a quarter of your business, a quarter of your home to be for the business, and now it can be a third, so slightly bigger, but it does put sort of an upper bound on how business, how big your business can be. You know, if you, if you're limited to say like 500 square feet, you're not going to be able to get that big and draw that much traffic in your neighborhood. Next, please. The other thing that I made a change for is there, there are currently some very specific uses that are called out that I just struck from the bylaw entirely, like not, not being allowed to have professional stuff run from home. Like, everyone in this room knows, some architect or lawyer, or some corporate employee who works from home, and we all were breaking the law during COVID. And so this just takes that out and says, you can do those things because they don't make noise. Sale of goods is duplicative, it was in the previous slide, but I think that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe we did move that substitute motion, yes, at the beginning, yep. So we now have two substitute motions pending before us, and something, so I have these listed, well, the entire article listed as two-thirds. I mentioned earlier that the main motion is no action, and no action, the quantum of vote is kind of irrelevant, but I was applying two-thirds to these substitute motions, but I don't, I didn't reach out to Mr. Cunningham or Ms. Zenberry, as I often do, to get their recommendations, so if they would like that reconsidered, I'm open to suggestions on that, but I'm proceeding with it as two-thirds for both substitute motions. It's, yes, Mr. Oster.
Adam Oster, Precinct 16. I just wanted to suggest, Mr. Moderator, that these are, although they're called substitutes, they are of the rank of an amendment, and the two-thirds would come in if one of these prevails, and then we are asked to adopt that as the, an amendment to the bylaw.
That's right, that's right. Maybe my language is a little sloppy, the, just to make clear Mr. Oster's point, the to actual, the act of substituting either of these motions to replace the main motion, that's always a majority vote, just as any amendment or substitute motion would be, but then the final vote will be a two-thirds vote. Okay, so let's, speaker queue is up, we heard from Mr. Greenspan, we'll take Kristin Anderson, followed by Beth Ann Friedman.
Kristin Anderson, Precinct 11. I run a business in the Heights, we do independent music distribution, and I can attest to the fact that there's simply not enough space in town for local businesses. In 2003, when my company had outgrown our space in Somerville, we wanted to move to Arlington, but we could not find adequate space in town. We ended up moving to Malden. We would not be able to move to the Heights for more than a decade. My company is not alone in this experience. For almost four years, Arlington Brewing Company was unable to grow out of their basement. Almost four years. Sorry, I get nervous when I watch my space, my place. Another business owner who runs a coffee bean roasting company told me that when he was trying to find space in town for his new business, he couldn't find open retail space. So he walked up and down Mass Ave and Broadway. He entered each of the stores there and asked the owners if they were planning on closing up shop, and that's how he found a retail space. And I know of another Arlington business owner who has had problems with the lack of commercial space in town. She employs a dozen people now, she has outgrown her space and wants to expand, but there's nowhere in Arlington for her to move, her business. If she moved to Cambridge or Somerville, she would lose her customers, so she's stuck and unable to grow. Yet, when I recount these experiences, folks ask, what about empty storefronts? But compared to neighboring municipalities, Arlington does not have many empty storefronts, and importantly, there- And importantly, there should be available space for businesses to move into. Still, there are a few empty storefronts, and here's why storefronts remain empty for any extended period of time. One, according to the Chamber of Commerce and our Economic Development Coordinator, some storefronts remain vacant because they are too small. We have heard from a local commercial real estate professional that retail businesses are looking for at least 1,000 to 1,500 square feet, and restaurants require 2,000 to 2,500 square feet. Two, businesses are looking for long-term leases to protect their build-out and relocation investments and cannot move into buildings that are slated for redevelopment. A good example of this would be the Christo Space, beloved Christo Space on the corner of Mass Ave and Lake Street. And three, businesses are looking for reasonable terms. So remember that landlords have the upper hand here because of a lack of commercial space in town. Now, I don't believe that this particular zoning change will solve the town's problem of a lack of economic development. For that, Arlington needs an economic development strategic plan. Still, I support this change, so I ask you to join me in voting yes for Andy Greenspan's substitute motion or amendment, or whatever it is, for Article 38. Thank you.
Yeah, they're both substitute motions. We'll take Beth Ann Friedman, followed by Elizabeth Dre. Point of order?
How are we going to vote, proceeding?
What's the order of voting? We're going to vote first on the Greenspan substitute motion, followed by, which will either substitute or not, and then the Fleming substitute motion, which will either substitute or not.
So the Fleming motion could not have a Greenspan?
It could. If they were both voted in affirmative, then yes. Yep. Beth Ann Friedman, followed by Elizabeth Dre.
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. And the main problem I have with these substitute motions is that it doesn't really take into, it doesn't distinguish between activities that would just take place within the facility versus activities that would involve people coming in and sales and traffic in the neighborhood. And I think it, you know, this whole thing needs much more consideration, because I have no problem with people having an art studio in their house if they want to sell their art online or find a gallery elsewhere to sell it, you know, but having, opening up their home as an art gallery and having traffic coming in and out, I think might present a problem with respect to traffic in the neighborhood. The same with, you know, somebody who makes sweaters and wants to sell, you know, that product out of their home and make like a clothing store in their home. You know, it would require a significant amount of foot traffic, or in this case, knowing Arlington, automobile traffic to get to the residential area. And I really think at this point, it'd be worth voting down these substitute motions and coming back with a more restricted kind of use for developing businesses in these residential areas. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Dre, followed by Michelle Durocher.
Good evening. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct 10. I was struck by Chair Zembari's comment that the Greenspan substitute motion might affect naturally affordable housing, and I was wondering if somebody could speak more on that.
Eugene Benson, Redevelopment Board. The Greenspan substitute motion would allow businesses in what are now residential buildings. Many of them are the older residential buildings in the R3 through R7 zones, and I don't know if anybody would choose to evict tenants, to put a business in, or even take down the building to put a business in, but right now, businesses basically can't be in those buildings with a few minor exceptions. So we don't know what the future will bring, but it does provide incentives to thinking about changing some of the residential property to business property.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the areas that Mr. Greenspan's substitute motion would expand into are where we currently have some of our more affordable, naturally affordable houses.
And specifically, like expand business uses?
Business uses.
Yeah, they are the residential districts that have three-family, four-family, five-family and larger houses.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll take Michelle Durocher, followed by Larry Slotnick.
Michelle Durocher, Precinct 19. I don't know about you, but when I was listening to the description of the Greenspan amendment with all of those changes to the different districts and a highly complex set of changes, we have a board in town that we've charged to do the analysis of this kind, to think about all of the impacts and dependencies between these changes. So, Mr. Moderator, I have a question for the Redevelopment Board. If they could describe, what would they do if they were analyzing the fullness of these, this package of changes? What would the process look like? Would there be?
Right, so the Redevelopment Board wouldn't be able to tell you what they would decide because they would need to meet to do that, but could someone from the Redevelopment Board describe the process by which, I mean, well, they did go through this process, right, when they arrived at their recommended vote in the first place.
I would just like a description of that process.
Of that process, okay. Ms. Zembari?
And what type of public engagement might there be? What would the typical length of time be? How many meetings would take to analyze this array of changes? Just understand the process.
Rachel Zembari, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. It's a broad question, but what we, I can describe the way that we, are you looking for the way that we did work with the petitioner in this case?
Right, I mean, part of the problem with the question, I think, is that there's a lot of kind of hypotheticals involved.
Correct. Okay. I can address how we would, the process that would allow us to create more certainty around our ability to evaluate this. I think one of the challenges that we had was some of the open questions. For example, we would engage the Director of Inspeccional Services. When you start to include or look at the conversion of multi-use of existing residential buildings to multi-use buildings, there are significant changes that are required from accessibility to fire separation to many other items that need to be taken into account when you evaluate whether the feasibility of this is worth the investment in the change within the zoning bylaws. So that is one example of the many different ways that we would seek to examine whether or not this change would actually lead to the development that is intended, which, again, the increase of commercial development in town is something that the Board is very supportive of. We would also engage the public through public hearings in the way that we do for any warrant article. There would be a series of public hearings leading up to this. I will say that the petitioner, Mr. Greenspan, did come before the Board multiple times and did an excellent job of engaging with the Redevelopment Board and the public in asking for and receiving feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take Larry Slotnick, followed by Stephanie Ford Wiems.
Good evening. Larry Slotnick, Precinct 7. With regard to the Greenspan substitute motion, I applaud Mr. Greenspan's desire to make, give space to the entrepreneurial spirit of Arlington residents, but I think there's like a drastic overreach in what he's proposing that could happen in R1 and R2 neighborhoods. The ability to make a product in your home, your apartment, sell it, have people coming, driving to your home, parking on your street, coming in, spending a half hour with you. I mean, that's just one of about a half a dozen concerns I have about what he's proposing. So I urge a no vote on that substitute motion.
Thank you. Point of order? Mr. Bowden.
Vincent Bowden, Precinct 1. Just questioning the scope here. Is R0 and R1 neighborhoods within scope?
Well, the changes, let's see, in the class of use tables, so they cover, I think you're asking because it covers, let's see, in the Greenspan substitute covers R3 to R7, just scanning. What's that?
Fleming is any residential.
Okay, and Fleming is any residential district, right? Mr. Cunningham is saying there's no proposed changes to R0 or R1. Is that true of the Fleming substitute as well?
No.
Because that's changing the, oh, just in Greenspan, correct. Okay. So, yes, Stephanie Ford Wiems, you have the floor.
Hi, Stephanie Ford Wiems, Precinct 8. I have a question on the Greenspan substitute motion. I'm on Section 5.4.3 with the chart of uses, specifically looking at the section about barbershop, hair salon, et cetera. Who should I direct my question?
Always direct it to me, and I can redirect.
I have some questions about how that use would come about within, so I'm looking at a triple-decker, someone who wants to open this business as a tenant, as a condo owner, other scenarios, and specifically, those types of businesses only. I should start with, I support all small business. Everybody should have a small business in their house. I am for absolutely all of it, except this. So my question about this is that these types of businesses, so as someone who owns a real estate company, these types of businesses in particular impact people's ability to obtain financing and change the type of insurance that they have. So when I bring that question back to, as a landlord of a triple-decker, must I allow someone to put a hair salon in my building as a tenant within a condo or in a triple-decker, et cetera? Could I do this by right and force this on my landlord or on my condo association?
Do you, as the property owner, have the right to restrict beyond?
To say no.
The classes of use allowed by the zoning bylaw? Is that the question?
It's one of the questions, I believe. So as a triple-decker owner, could I say to my tenant, you cannot open one of these businesses?
Can someone from the Redevelopment Board answer that question? Or Town Council? Or Mr. Champa? There's a lot of finger pointing.
Mike Champa, Director of Inspeccional Services. Yeah, I'm going to give this a shot. What's?
Yeah.
Mike Champa, Director of Inspeccional Services. Please repeat the question.
Absolutely. So if I own a triple-decker and my tenant comes to me and says, I want to open a hair salon in my apartment, can I tell him no?
Yes, you can.
Under this scenario?
Yes, you're the property owner.
Like, under the Greenspan substitute motion? So the property owner can impose restrictions beyond what's allowed?
The property owner can impose restrictions on their own property, correct.
And that's, is that Andrew Greenspan nodding yes also? Oh, okay. So the property owner can say, I want, I don't want this type of business, or I don't want any business in my building?
That's correct.
So this does not change that?
It does not.
In a condo association, if that triple-decker is three units, can the condo association say to an owner, you cannot have a business, or you cannot have this type of business?
That would all have to be within the deed documents and the condo agreements.
But the town cannot say, you must allow this business by right?
That's correct.
Okay. Can anyone see any other scenarios I'm skipping? My concern there is that foisting a business like this onto an owner changes their financial situation and changes the financial situation of other people in the building. So that's what I'm trying to protect.
Is there a question on that, or?
Not unless someone can speak to that, I'm good.
I think you have the one.
Any other opinions? I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, it is now 11 o'clock. We have a motion to adjourn, but before we take that, do we have any notices of reconsideration? Hearing done. Do we have a second on the motion to adjourn? Okay, all those in favor of adjourning?
Yes.
Say yes. No one wants to make a motion to commit at this point? All those opposed, say no?
No.
We are adjourned. We'll see you back here Monday night. Not only with a motion to commit, but we'll have an amendment to a motion to commit, just to make it more interesting.